Good evening. I'd like to call the October 13th, 2025 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio and the time is 5:00 PM. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment's silence. Thank you all for being here tonight. Please apologize for some technical difficulty for hatters. With the storm, they're having situations with the internet, with spectrum, trying to log in and have things rolling. So tonight, our student advisor will be doing the remote. We will not see them, but we will be able to hear them to speak on behalf of their schools and the pledge allegiance tonight. So I do not see any commissioners here tonight, but I do want to say thank them all for the duties and jobs that they perform for Dare County Schools and the community of Dare County. They're really an outstanding group of individuals and really their support makes things very nice for Dare County Schools. So Ms. Alana, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
If y'all will all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. First order of business this evening is to prove the agenda.
Chairman, I move you approve the agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Pang.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bateman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Next, I'll turn it over to Evan. He's here tonight on behalf of pointers rule for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will now read the Dare County Board of Education Public Participation Public Comment Guidelines. The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about matters like implementation of board policy, the quality of education programming, or school facilities. According to Policy 2340, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults, and statements that are disruptive to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. I believe we've had two people who've signed up for public comments. Ms. Laura Henry.
Hey, friends. My name is Laura Henry. I'm one of the owners of OBX Soundside MMA, the Jiu-Jitsu Kickboxing MMA and Judo School located right next to TJ Maxx in Nags Head. We are also currently home to the OBX Wrestling Factory, a 2,100 square foot wall-to-wall mat-covered room where champions and dedicated local middle school and high school athletes have participated in wrestling over the last few years. My gym provides much more than just grappling and self-defense techniques. We are currently part of three 501(c)(3)'s that focus on giving back to the community and providing opportunities, including Grapple for Life, which connects those who have been affected by mental health crisis with free and affordable Jiu-Jitsu. We promote a stop bullying and bully-proof mindset for both on and off our mats. My school gives a space for students currently from ages three to 70 to tap into a version of themselves that they never knew existed. In my facility, we go all-in on helping our students find the confidence to stand up and speak up for themselves and the courage to stand up and speak up for others. On my mats, I have watched students in the autism spectrum who came in completely nonverbal now thrive and excel in this environment. I have teenagers that show up every day that we have had classes for the last two months, usually by Uber, who originally called to inquire about a program and simply said, "I need something to keep me out of trouble and make friends." I have students whose parents signed them up after an incident where they didn't know how to defend themselves happened at school while they were not around. My gym promotes a lifestyle of bettering yourself at least 1% each and every day, both on and off the mats. Right now, I have 47 students from kindergarten to middle school who have the opportunity to explore this side of themselves because their parents can get them to the gym in a timely manner. I would like to grant that same opportunity to students whose parents cannot provide transportation after school. Parents are simply doing their best to create the environments for their children to grow, and as a daughter of a mother that had three jobs and a dad that had two, I find it incredibly unfair that because of these circumstances, opportunities like the ones I would like to provide are missed, especially when they are in such close proximity. My facility is 2.1 miles away from First Flight Elementary, 2.4 miles away from First Flight Middle, 2.2 miles away from First Flight High, and 1.4 miles away from Nags Head Elementary. If I was granted the title of being an approved bus stop for these locations, I would be able to give the same opportunity of building confidence, skill, and a mat family, as we like to call ourselves, to approximately 2,362 students that attend these schools. If I were an approved bus stop location, middle and high school wrestling athletes would be given the opportunity to use a facility that was literally made to build champions. If I were granted the title of an approved bus stop, I would be able to provide supervised childcare to students after school on a regular basis, including half-days. In our gym, we say a rising tide raises all ships. By providing an adequate after-school option, we are trying to do just that. There is no denying that there is a desperate need for after-school childcare, and I'm simply trying to fill that need.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Trinity Yanis.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board and Administrator of the Community. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I want to talk about the current practice facilities for First Flight Wrestling Program. Right now, the room is 28 by 32 feet, which is 83 square feet, roughly the size of a living room. Last season, the smallest space was shared between the both the boys and girls teams. The boy team had 32 wrestlers and the girls team had 12 wrestlers. To put it simply, this is not an adequate amount of space for that amount of wrestlers. The room is so small that the wrestlers had to split it, so neither one of the teams was able to be in there full-time. So half the team, the girls team, would have to do something for an hour, and then the boys team would have to go do something else for an hour. And they really need to be wrestling to get better at wrestling. So both teams lost about half the practice time that they really needed. I know that there's a long-term plan to build proper facilities, and that's something we're all looking forward to. But in the meantime, I think we need a short-term solution to have the kids be able to train safely, efficiently, and have the same opportunities as other programs. I didn't even know she was going to be here. So OBX Soundside MMA, we built a wrestling room there. It's 2,100 square feet, and it's two miles from the school. It's not being used as, like, we're not using it right now. And it would be able to fit all the wrestlers in there, or you could just put the boys in there, whatever. It has all the safety equipment that you're going to need. It's fully insured by USA Wrestling. It has security cameras, which we could give, we could give access to the schools. I believe that they'd be willing to work with you to find a fair and affordable arrangement that will benefit everyone and our First Flight wrestlers. Our wrestling program's pretty good in First Flight. We had a state champion last year. We've had several state champions, state placers. I just think that we need to find a short-term solution until that new room is built in the next couple of years, whenever that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have, sign up for public comment.
Thank you, Evan. Next, we'll move over to announcements and recognitions. I'd like to begin, just to share with the community, this month, several of them, which we're going to start out with the National Principals Month. It takes place all month long. We also had the National School Custodian Work Day, which was October the 2nd, and National Coaches Day, which was October the 6th. We just thank you for the dedication and service that you do for our students in Dare County Schools. We can't say enough each and every day, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do. Next, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bassnight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. A major goal of the North Carolina School Boards Association is to provide growth opportunities for school board members. Through the NCSBA Academy for School Boardsmanship, and I'm going to struggle with that one, I have a hard time saying that word, Boardsmanship, school board members are provided high-quality training programs to help them effectively fulfill their responsibilities as leaders of public education in North Carolina. This program provides opportunities for school board members to meet the requirement of General Statute 115(c)-50 mandating 12 clock hours of training every two years. In addition, legislation has been passed by the North Carolina General Assembly in the summer of 2009, requiring all North Carolina board members to receive two hours of ethics training within 12 months of the initial appointment or election, and again within 12 months of each subsequent reappointment or reelection. Programs provided through the NCSBA Academy for School Boardsmanship assist participants with broadening their base of knowledge regarding efficient and effective governance of public elementary and secondary education in our state. Since its inception in 1985, the Academy for School Boardsmanship has provided an avenue for board members to develop skills and knowledge to carry out the task of leading the state's school districts that are recognized and is recognized by the Bell Award for Whole Board Achievement. This year, NCSBA is honored to recognize the Dare County Board of Education with the Silver Bell Award, signifying that every member of the board has actively worked towards meeting their 12 hours of training, completing a total of between 701 and 800 cumulative hours of training during the July 1 through June 30 timeframe. On behalf of NCSBA, it is my pleasure to present the Dare County Board of Education with their Silver Bell Award certificate. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Ms. Denise Fallon now to help me with the next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Okay. Okay, there they are. Okay, they're my people. I'd like to invite up to the podium with me Ms. Diane Childress and the folks from First Flight Middle School that are here with her to help celebrate an amazing educator from First Flight Middle School. So it is my honor to be here this evening to share some information about a certificate of recognition and an award for an amazing educator of science at First Flight Middle School, Ms. Kaylee Kifner. This evening, we're recognizing Kaylee because she was selected as the 2025 Outstanding Middle School Science Teacher for District One by the North Carolina Science Teachers Association. I just want to share that she spent a lot of time last year working collaboratively with Don Tillit as we worked out new science curriculum standards and alignment, along with a lot of work on our protocols for safety in our science labs across the district. And so Kaylee, I appreciate all the work you did, and it couldn't have gone to a better person, so congratulations. Her little ones are here.
Mr. Chairman, for our last recognition, I know we've been trying to get Ms. Spencer here for a couple of months. Now, she was unable to make it tonight, so if it would be agreeable with the Board, I'd like to move that presentation to next month when we could have her here.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Student advisors.
Ms. Gaskell, are you ready?
So I just wanted to make a quick announcement.
Yes, please do. Come to the mic. Come to the mic, please.
Thank you for your patience this evening. Between the hatteras internet and the traffic in Manio, we're struggling a little bit with our students, but I told them to take their time to get here safely. So Meredith is going to start with our schools in Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk and so forth, and then hopefully Marla will be here. She's on her way. All right, Meredith?
Hello. So for Kitty Hawk Elementary School, their PBIS theme this year is Set Sail Soar High: 100 Years of Learning at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. The staff kicked off the year with music smiles and positive energy as the.
A little bit nervous.
You're doing good.
But with Kitty Hawk, we have, the kindergarten students were busy in their transformed classroom using under-construction CTE kits. The first, second, and third grade teachers collaborated on Live Data Dive Day to create walk-to-read groups to increase student learning and reading. To celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, our students participated in Global Cultural Day using all five senses. Our student clubs this year include SCA, Puzzle Club, Chess Club, Spanish Club, Parent-Child Book Club, Sign Language Club, Digital Design Club, and After-School Chorus. We would like to invite the Board of Education to join us for some fun events in October. On October 16th, please come to celebrate Bike, Walk, Roll to School Day with us during morning arrival. On October 29th, we invite you to judge our Once Upon a Time Pumpkin Contest in the Media Center. We look forward to seeing you there, and thank you for your continued support. First Flight Elementary School, they've had an exciting and productive start to the year. They've completed their beginning-of-the-year data collection for both math and reading. Following this, the staff participated in K5 Data Days, where teachers and support staff collaborated to analyze data and determine next steps to support both core instruction and individual student growth. They're thrilled to launch their Intervention Flyer Time for grades 1 to 3, beginning October 13th. During this one-hour block, all students will participate in targeted instruction to meet their specific needs and accelerate growth. Our fourth and fifth grade math and reading interventions will begin on October 20th, ensuring every student at First Flight Elementary School receives personalized support to help them thrive academically. First Flight Elementary School also hosted a wonderful Title I Literacy Night on October 7th, where families enjoyed engaging literacy activities and took home Make It Take It resources to support reading at home. In addition, students and families were able to shop at our Scholastic Book Fair, helping to build excitement for reading across the school community. First Flight Elementary School is off to a strong start this year, as they continue to focus on collaboration, data-driven instruction, personalized learning for all students, and community connection. First Flight Middle School, they have several celebrations to share. First off, we inducted 2041 new Seahawks to our National Junior Honor Society chapter. While these students have already demonstrated their strong performance in scholarship and leadership, they will have the opportunity to complete service hours this year. They can't wait to see what the students will do. Our avid students visited College of the Albemarle this month to participate in the Aviation Academy and had a great visit. The Seahawk 8th Grade Band, led by their director, Ms. Cardwell, played alongside the Nighthawk Band at a recent Friday ballgame. We're very proud of how hard they worked to prepare for this opportunity. In collaboration with Outer Banks Health and Thrive OBX, one of our PE teachers, Ms. Harris, has organized the program Seahawks Who Walk. They've picked several afternoons where the staff will get together and walk to local establishments, which has been great for the school culture and health. Lastly, they visited a few volunteers from League of Women Voters and had them come to First Flight Middle School to set up polling booths for our students to vote for this year's SGA student leaders. Congrats to our winners, and they look forward to hearing the voices and watching them grow this year. At First Flight High School, the focus is on academic growth and student success. Teachers are using fly time each week to provide students with extra help, enrichment, and support. This time has become a powerful tool to ensure every student receives what they need to succeed. In the classrooms, students are engaged in meaningful learning across all subjects, from hands-on math and science lessons to strong literacy and problem-solving work in English and social studies. Our academics remain a top priority. Career and technical education programs are also mentoring students with real-world skills for college and careers. Beyond academics, our fine arts, athletics, and student leadership programs are thriving, creating a well-rounded and positive school culture. They're especially proud to announce that the athletic program recently won the Wells Fargo Cup, a testament to the dedication, talent, and teamwork of the student athletes and coaches. At First Flight High School, they're proud to announce the commitment of our students and staff, and we remain dedicated to helping every Nighthawk take flight. At Nags Head Elementary School, they had the Pumpkin Fair, which was a huge success, on Friday, October 3rd. They also held a cornhole tournament, offering multiple food trucks for both fun and fine dining. They had live entertainment, bounce houses, and even a human slot machine. There was a pumpkin decorating contest, face painting, young entrepreneur booths, and a prize auction. Students, staff, and families had the best time. The proceeds from this year's Pumpkin Fair will go towards playground improvements. A huge thank you to our Nags Head Elementary School PTO for putting on this awesome event that will continue to get bigger each year. Nags Head Elementary School will also be gearing up for our Family Math Night at the end of October. All families will be invited to the Food Lion in Nags Head for a night of shopping and budget challenges. Light refreshments will be served. This date and time for the event will be forthcoming, so please be on the lookout for additional information. At Nags Head Elementary School, we are stronger together. Go Wave Riders! Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marla Woodson. I'll be stating the rest of the highlights. At Manio Elementary School, last month, they have been filled with learning, creativity, and community support. The Island Farm welcomed multiple grade levels to enjoy a day on the farm, complete with pumpkins to take home. They also appreciated a visit from the Roanoke Island Fire Department. They showed the students how they can be safe at home. In the classrooms, our students enjoyed the excitement of room transformations that transported them to jungles, campgrounds, restaurants, and apple farms. Some classes have also had the opportunity to meet their buddy class, pairing upper-grade students with a lower-grade class to build important relationships. Ms. Callie and Ms. Jordan's classes have even participated in a special unveiling event. We are proud of the creativity and collaboration happening throughout our building, and we are excited for all the fall, for all the fall has in store for MES. We are very excited that this is Manio Middle School. We're very excited that Ms. Gallup's class has begun to build their second boat. Students are enjoying the hands-on experience of boat building. Manio Middle School is very appreciative of Mr. Glenn Bradley for his time as student, for his time as well as Mr. Bayless for his generous support. Also, Manio Middle School is excited to have Detective Peadon of Kill Devil Hills and his Canine Sailor. Come speak to the students about social media, internet crimes. Keeping our students aware and safe is our top priority. October 30th, Manio Middle School will have the spooktacular music concert. It will begin at 6:00. Manio Middle School has a successful spirit week to bring some fun to the hallways. We also supported the Special Olympics Week with Spread the Word Inclusion Week. At Manio High School, they've been busy, and it's been a busy and exciting month. They wrapped up a successful homecoming week filled with school spirit, from our annual parade and community tailgate to a memorable dance, which was canceled, actually. It was, it's going to on Thursday, bring everyone together. They're proud to celebrate Coach Jimmy Metzinger, who was named.
Postponed.
Celebrate Coach Jimmy Metzinger, who was named the NWCA Battles, won the 2025 State Coach of the Year presented by the United States Marine Corps. In addition, he received a $5,000 community enrichment grant from the Outer Banks Community Foundation. Congratulations to Coach Metzinger. Our athletic teams continue to shine. Manio Football brought home the Marlin Bowl, and Manio Soccer claimed victory in the first ever Kobia Cup. It's been a strong fall for Manio Athletics as our teams gear up for the playoffs. In academics and student life, DECA, our marketing and business club, has doubled its membership this year, an excitement sign of growing student interest. Avid and the National Honor Society have also launched their peer tutoring sessions during Tribe Time, offering valuable academic support to their classmates. Mrs. Pack and Mr. Williamson and mathletes are working with elementary students with Monday Night Alive. Congratulations to Nina Kiroz and William Reed for earning national recognition from the College Board National Merit Program. Finally, we would like to invite you, the week of October 20th, starting with Wednesday, October 22nd, for the First Hat Trick Fest put on by Avid Program from 3:30 to 5:00 PM, followed by men's soccer game. The next day, they will bring back you, bring you, bring your parent to School Day at MHS for our families to do a day in the life of a student. We look forward to having a great end of October. Cape Hatter Secondary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here. Alrighty. At Cape Hatter Secondary, no storm can stop our commitment to student achievement. We continue to rise, learn, and lead every day. Cape Hatter Secondary School has launched the Hurricane Watch Flexible Time Schedule, a new 30-minute block designed to give high school students the freedom to explore their interests and develop new skills. During this time, students can choose from a wide range of offerings, including content support, sign language, journaling and scrapbooking, dance, fish hatchery work, posa, DECA preparation, Science Olympiad, and many more opportunities. Students are enjoying this innovative approach to learning, discovering new passions, strengthening their skill sets, and preparing for bright futures. In other news, the Cape Hatter Secondary School Marching Band proudly competed in the 50th Peanut Festival Battle of the Bands. In the 1A Division, our marching canes brought home an outstanding sweep. First place overall, first-place music, first-place visual, first-place general effects, and second-place drum major. Congratulations to our talented students and directors for this incredible achievement. At Cape Hatter's Elementary School, the school year began with several notable accomplishments. The belief fundraiser launched with strong preparation from students and families, providing essential support for upcoming school initiatives. The first character trait assembly highlighted the values being emphasized across campus and recognized individuals who amplify positive character. The introduction of Open Gate farther strengthened the school's culture of trust and connection. Curlicle Night was well-attended, offering families meaningful engagement with teachers and insight. and insight into academic expectations and goals. In addition, the launch of Walk to Learn marked another step towards enriching student experiences. These achievements are especially commendable given recent challenges, including weather disruptions, remote learning days, and power outages. The resilience shown by staff, students, and families has set a positive and promising tone for the months ahead. At Dare Early College, Dare Early College is continuing to build momentum and strengthening its school community and culture. A newly developed mission and vision statement reflects the school's commitment to helping students discover their passions, thrive academically, and lead with purpose. Families have come together to establish a parent-teacher organization, PTO, opening new avenues for collaboration and support. Meanwhile, students have formed a Student Government Association, providing a platform for student voice in shaping school life and activities. On October 15th, the school will host Barbecue &amp; Beyond, an event designed to be both engaging and informative. The PTO will serve barbecue plates while Mr. Hunting presents valuable information to families about college pathways, opportunities, and future planning.
Students, thank y'all so much for the update. We do appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Pang.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brower. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Aye carries. Next will be Ms. Susan Rue from the DF, going to give us a first report of the DF program. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Susan Rue, and I am Chair of the Dare Education Foundation Board of Directors. I'm a retired school administrator and contractor for the Virginia Department of Education. I'm also the proud grandmother of four students that attend Dare County Schools. I would like to recognize other DF Board members that are here tonight, if you would please stand. Alan Kimball, Matt Melvin, Kip Tab, Stephen Nichols, Jason Borland, and I think Brian Harris is joining us from the Buxton Annex, he said. Thank you for joining me this evening. The Dare Education Foundation values our relationship with the Board of Education and Dare County Schools. We appreciate the opportunity to share an overview of our efforts this past fiscal year. Our mission statement is very simple, so we can remember it, but a powerful one: to support students and teachers in Dare County Schools. Some may ask, why is that support needed? Let's take a look at some of the facts that illustrate the need for this support. I'm sure you are aware that North Carolina is ranked 43rd in the country for annual teacher salaries. These salaries are an extra challenge for our teachers who live in a resort area with a high cost of living. Many of them struggle to find affordable housing. Another data point is that North Carolina is ranked second for the highest out-of-pocket teacher expenses at $1,632 per year. So teacher salaries are low and out-of-pocket expenses are high. Other data includes that North Carolina is ranked 48th in per pupil spending, which is nearly $5,000 less per pupil than the national average. We all know how the annual costs of colleges have skyrocketed over the years. This increase is reflected in the over $24,000 cost per year at a four-year state college in North Carolina. These are just a few examples of why the support of Dare Education Foundation is needed in our schools. Now that the need has been established, I want to share how DF provides this support. We provide funding for instructional grants for classrooms and schools. Thanks to a new grant from the Outer Banks Community Foundation, we provide funding for after-school clubs. DEF provides funding for academic student competitions at the state and national level, and teachers can request reimbursements for coursework, exams, certifications, and professional development opportunities. Am I clicking along in the right pace? There we are. That's the list I just explained. How is this support provided again? DEF provides affordable teacher housing, which has become a model for other school districts. We also recognize the talented and hard-working staff members that we have in Dare County Schools through different recognitions throughout the school year. I'm sure you have seen our "We Love Our Teacher" signs throughout the community. This past school year, DEF also awarded 18 students in three different schools scholarships that totaled $44,000. We are fortunate to live in a community that is dedicated to helping our students and families with this financial burden. Our funding for this support comes from donations, special events, grants, and interest. 100% of our donations go to support students and teachers. What is the impact from this support? I have asked three VITs, Very Important Teachers, to share how DEF's support has impacted them, starting with Shannon Brinkley from the librarian at First Flight Middle School. Ms. Brinkley?
Before I say what I'm going to say about our school, I personally want to thank DEF. As somebody that is back in college, the reimbursement is very nice, so I appreciate that. Okay, so, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of First Flight Middle School. Last year, Ms. Terry Wingenroth, who has since retired, or she would be doing this, applied for a DEF grant. And thanks to her efforts and DEF's generosity, our school was able to purchase two class sets per grade level of the book Yellow Star by Jennifer Roy and a copy for each staff member. Yellow Star is a historical fiction novel based on the true story of the author's Aunt Sylvia. She was one of only 12 children to survive the Lott's Ghetto during the Holocaust. Told from Sylvia's perspective, the book shares her experiences of fear, resilience, and hope as she and her family struggles to survive. Every student and staff member in our school read the book Yellow Star last April. As you are aware, the Giselle Abramson Holocaust Education Act passed in 2021 mandates Holocaust education in all middle and high schools. This provided us with a great opportunity to utilize the grant money in a way that met the requirements while also making the learning experience truly meaningful for our students. After purchasing the books, we used the remaining DEF grant money to help create a collaborative art project that involved every student. As a concluding activity, classes visited the library to explore our staff-created Holocaust museum and participate in a reflective art project. Thanks to the Dare Education Foundation and our PTO, each student received their own kit, which included a ceramic butterfly, paint, and necessary supplies. After reading about a Holocaust survivor or victim, they painted the butterfly in that person's honor or memory. After the project's completion, all the butterflies were later sealed into an epoxy table by two of our students' families. The table is now on display in our library, a lasting reminder of remembrance and hope. This was truly a team effort, although I'm the one standing here. Ms. Cece Slagle, Hillary Braden, Suzanne Blackstock, Ricky Stewart, our staff, parents, and DEF helped bring this to life. It was truly a collaborative effort. We're grateful to the Dare Education Foundation for making this meaningful project possible for our students and community, and we invite you to stop by the library and check out the table. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Jeannie Mauser.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeannie Mauser, and I've had the privilege of serving as an educator with Dare County Schools for the past 14 years. Tonight, I want to express my deep gratitude... Sorry, I get a little emotional sometimes. ...to the Dare Education Foundation, not only as a teacher who has witnessed the impact of their support in our schools, but also as a parent whose family has been personally touched by their generosity. This year, my son Joshua received an academic scholarship from the Dare Education Foundation, and I can't tell you what a difference it's made. Because of DEF's support, he was able to start college at UNCW without taking out any loans. That peace of mind, knowing that he could begin his studies debt-free, has been such a gift. And if he was here right now, he'd say, "Momma, please stop crying." Joshua is majoring in pre-med, and as you can imagine, there's a long road ahead. The support, thank you, the support they've given him and our family truly matters. During high school, Joshua was a full-time student at both First Flight and the College of Albemarle, earning his associate's degree before attending UNCW this fall. He swam competitively during the school year and worked full-time during the summers to help pay for college. These commitments, along with his course load at First Flight High School and COA, meant that there was little time for anything other than studying, working, and practicing. When the Dare Education Foundation recognized him with his scholarship, it wasn't just financial help, it was validation. It told him that all those long nights and early mornings were really worth it. It affirmed that his hard work and dedication mattered, that his community believed in him and his dreams. I wanted to come tonight and share our story because DEF has always stood behind both students and teachers. I wanted the board to hear firsthand just how much that that support means. As a teacher, I want to thank the Dare Education Foundation for the difference that they make, not only in classrooms, but in the lives of students and families across the county. DEF doesn't just fund education, it provides opportunity, encouragement, and hope. They are helping shape the future, one student at a time, and as a mom, that kind of encouragement means everything, as you can tell from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for believing in our children and for investing in their future. It means a whole lot. Sorry about the tears.
We have a video from the librarian from Cape Hatter's Secondary School. She said, "It's a good thing I sent a video because I would not be able to physically be here tonight." So here's Evan Ferguson.
Hi, I'm Evan Ferguson. I am the Library Media Coordinator at Cape Hatter's Secondary School in Buxton. In 2024, I had the honor of being chosen for the Educators of Excellence Program through the North Carolina Museum of Natural Sciences, which has served educators with this program since 1987. I was awarded the Dare Education Foundation Professional Development Grant to supplement the cost of travel to the Yellowstone Institute. This professional development was unlike anything I had experienced in my 14 years of education, in education. In June, we set off to Yellowstone, where we were accompanied by several members of the educational staff from the museum, which included a geologist and two biologists, and their knowledge of the land, flora, and fauna was unsurpassed. With their expert guidance, our group toured the Lamar Valley, where we saw wolves, and elk, and bison, grizzly, black bear, so much more. We also visited the Grand Canyon of Yellowstone, thermal features including Old Faithful, the Grand Tetons, where we saw the famous Mother Bear, Grizzly 399 with her two cubs, and in addition, we met with field experts. Our group was comprised of myself, which I'm a former CTE teacher, and I had my media background, and then science teachers, math, English, so we had a full gambit. And we were fully immersed with this dedicated, self-driven group of professionals for 10 days. The brainstorming and idea sharing was unlike anything that I have ever experienced in my professional career, and it was just this synergy and innovation as far as instructional ideas that was boundless. Part of the experience was to create lessons from the trip to take back to our school and share with the Educators of Excellence Group. I chose to compare and contrast Cape Hatteras National Seashore and Yellowstone National Park's sustainable tourism programs. The students that worked on this project were middle school science and high school marketing, and they learned about both parks and then identified issues that are relevant to Cape Hatteras National Seashore that they could educate visitors on. And so some of them were like the impacts of trampling on the dunes, pack-in-pack-out to reduce litter on the beach, and then dark sky education for sea turtles. We shared these projects and findings with the park superintendent, Dave Hallock. The students were not only excited to hear about my trip and see the pictures, but they were extremely passionate about our national park and felt empowered to share their expertise and concern for the area. And I will be using this project as a cornerstone for my next national board renewal submission. So I just can't thank Dare Education Foundation enough for their unwavering support of our staff and students. And this experience has been a career highlight for me, and I will use what I learned to benefit the students of Dare County for years to come. And I also share these resources with my fellow librarians who can share those out to their schools. So, thank you, DEF.
I think it's still on. There we go. There are several ways that you and our community can support the Dare Education Foundation. Donations are appreciated, and there are opportunities for school year sponsorships that are included in the packet that you receive tonight. Please attend our outreach activities and follow us on social media. I would like to close with this quote. "The future..." Is the quote up there? "The future of our communities will be written in the investments we make in our children today." DEF is willing and dedicated to make this investment. Thank you very much.
Susan, thank you. If you would, we have any questions from any board member on the presentation? Wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll be turning it over to Mr. Pang. He's our representative for the Dare County Housing Task Force to give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 18 months ago, a little over 18 months ago, Dare Community Task Force was formed to take a look at housing. In our first meeting, which dated back to, I think, December 23, we had a little history of some workforce housing initiatives that were started but never finished. So housing's been an issue in Dare County for workforce going back to the 90s. The first meeting was held January 18 with a 28-member board. Various individuals from the tourism industry, county commissioners, county managers, the mayor's, hospital, restaurant, builders association, education, real estate community formed this task force. We had a chair with Donna Creef, vice chair with Malcolm Fearing, who's here tonight. Malcolm, thank you for coming. Once we formed that, we went to school. We really went to school. We learned all about workforce housing that's going on around the country, the do's, the don'ts, how do you do it, when you can do it, why you can't do it, zoning, tax incentives, grants, and the list goes on and on and on. For me, who knew nothing about housing, I've learned a tremendous amount about the housing industry. We've studied many models from around the country and within the state on affordable housing. There's some... There are some municipalities that are ahead of us, they have projects already up and going for workforce housing. Out west, some of our ski resorts, who are similar to Dare County, where we have Atlantic Ocean and sand, they've got nice mountains and snow. They've been doing this for 30 years. They've got workforce housing down to a science, and we've taken some of those strategies that they've used, and we're going to put them to use here. The mission was to collaboratively develop short-term and long-term housing solutions that affect Dare County residents, business owners, and the workforce. These solutions include physical sites for construction, what type of units can be built, getting community support through appropriate outreach activities with the help of East Carolina, and implementing regulatory reforms and options that can be tailored to fit each community's unique characteristics and constituency. Dare County is a little different than a lot of our counties around the state, because we have six different municipalities and unincorporated Dare to take a look at when it comes to building. UNC School of Government has helped us tremendously in this endeavor. We've looked at different tax incentives for builders, grants for funding, how to form nonprofits, housing authorities, and once again, types of houses that could be built. The task force applied for "Our Home, Our State" initiative by UNC government. Only 14 counties were included in that, out of 100, so we are very lucky to be a part of "Our Home, Our State," which is an 18-month program that helps us develop workforce housing. And I think, Malcolm, you're on that committee? So the task force, once again, over the last 18 months, has been well-versed and learned a great deal about, once again, how to build, what to build, where to build, types of financing with the uniqueness of Dare County. So we've gotten to the point with our task force that we're ready to form a nonprofit, the Dare Housing Foundation. That foundation will have a board of 13 members. Some of those members will be coming off our task force board. I want to say a few words about Donna Creef, our chair, Malcolm Fearing, our vice chair for the task force. An amazing amount of work these two individuals put in at no cost. They did it on their own time, as well did the rest of the task force. And once again, we're at a point where, once the Housing Foundation is formed, which I think is going to be next month, hopefully, Malcolm, we can start looking at, hopefully, building some workforce housing in the county. I want to ask Malcolm, is there anything you would like to add, Mr. Fearing, to what I've said? Usually, you're a man of few words.
Ron, for asking me to come out here. You know, I really wished I had that slogan that you ended with, that I could repeat. I was not a good student. But investment of our children, and not only our children, but our community, and that's what this group has been about. Ron has represented the school board exceedingly well, and we're launching something that's not really new. It's through this Board of Education, a prior board launched an initiative that's being studied and looked at throughout the state, and maybe even some legal scholars are looking at it, how Dare County was able to get special legislation, as the whole state should have that legislation, to provide housing. It's a critical issue. It's not going to be resolved any quicker than beach nourishment will be resolved. It's an initiative that's going to be as important as beach nourishment, as education, as healthcare, as our police force, housing our residents, our next generation of young people, young leaders, that will be sitting in our place. We're excited about this launch. There's an incredible amount of work to be done. Some people have said it is hard. It's not really hard, it's just unfamiliar. If I sat in y'all's chairs and tried to go through the regulations that y'all are familiar with, it would be unfamiliar to me. But to y'all, it's not hard. It's just work that you do on a daily basis. And that's what I anticipate, the work group that will be formed, hopefully, y'all will make the last of two appointments that we need to fulfill our board. The Board of Education's appointment, and Donna is in Kewawa Hills tonight at their meeting, awaiting their appointment. So, again, this community issue cannot, will not, be addressed without the community addressing it. And the Board of Education and who you represent are a great part of that community. So, if you have any questions, I'll give you Donna's phone number.
Now, Mr. Fearing brought up a good point several months ago. We have an annual budget of about $73 million a year. K through 12, we're going to spend about $900 million investment on our students, which is a huge dollar amount. Once they go away to college for four years, the military, whatever, can they come back here and afford a place to live? Answer's no. So workforce housing, affordable housing, whatever you want to call it, is necessary and very, very important for Dare County, for the young generation to replace us. A $900 million investment, and they can't come back? They need to come back.
And I'll say this too, in closing, as y'all recognize, the commitment of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, we too so recognize that commitment, not only with the Dare County Board of Commissioners, but each and every unit of government in Dare County has been at that task force and attended those meetings as other community leaders, and we cannot address this again without that community spirit, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Payne? Thank you for your work on that committee, and thank you for the update tonight. Next, we'll turn it over to Ms. Mora, if you'll give us an update on the Dual Language Immersion Program, which our acronym is DLI.
DLI. Good evening, I'm Mora Velazquez, and I'm here to highlight or just share a little bit about Kitty Hawk Elementary's dual-language program. The dual-language teachers at Kitty Hawk Elementary are standing out as leaders, innovators, and collaborators, both in their school and across the state. For Hispanic Heritage Month, the DLI team designed an immersive, five-senses cultural rotation where students explored the richness and diversity of Hispanic cultures. They had a touch center where the students created colorful paper fans, which were later used in a flamenco music rotation. For sound and movement, the students explored musical genres, dances, and instruments. In smell and taste, they had a blind smell activity where they got to guess tropical fruits like mango, avocado, and rambutan. In sight, they had a geography mini lesson where they were identifying geographic features, famous landmarks, and landscapes. This interactive event helps students experience culture through language, art, and sensory development. Outside of the classroom, outside of Kitty Hawk, the DLI teachers embrace opportunities to learn and improve their teaching skills, as well as share what they have learned with others. Kitty Hawk DLI teachers Elena Gonzalez, Iwinza Sanchez, Francita Rodriguez, and Zalania Almonacid represented Dare County Schools at Winston-Salem's Fall Flank Foreign Language Association of North Carolina Conference. Their presentations showcased a DLI classroom mascot strategy, which is a really fun, engaging way to bring science and social studies lessons from their home countries to life. The students learned about geography, habitats, and ecology while strengthening literacy skills and having fun. Those four ladies also were selected to attend the NCAP Professional Development Program in Kullowee for dual-language Spanish literacy in the elementary classroom. These sessions deepened their expertise in biliteracy instruction, fostered collaboration, and inspired new research-based classroom strategies to enhance student success. Zalandia has moved into a music position, and she is leading an innovative world music class, introducing students to the universal language of music. Rhythms, stories, and global songs help the students develop as musicians and as global citizens, valuing diversity and community. As part of her music class, each month, the students compose original songs inspired by the school's character traits, such as responsibility, gratitude, and growth mindset. These songs are shared in the morning announcements. Behind-the-scenes may be a little bit less exciting, but that dual-language team plays an integral role in supporting school-wide language development. They have worked out a schedule where they are able to provide assistance for their teachers, office staff, and families, and making sure that school communication is provided in multiple languages. Francie leads the 5th grade Spanish club and provides language support for the teachers and ensures that school communication is out there to everybody, and that 5th grade Spanish club also is bringing family members in so they can engage and have fun with their students, with their children as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Thank you for the update. Next, we'll go to unfinished business. Evan, if you would like to go with that, about the policies, any questions, any concerns about the policies from any board member for the second reading?
Before you is our four attached policies. One on technology-responsible use, internet safety, wireless communication devices, tobacco products, and political activities. These all came out of the Policy Review Committee, and this is just on for second reading.
And I want to thank the Policy Review, I mean, the committee. They really do a lot of hard work, and Mr. Brower's giving us updates right after the meeting really helps the board as well. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adopt the policy manual updates as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the policy manual updates as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Payne. Second by Mr. Bateman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the MOU between Dare County Schools and the Dare Education Foundation. We discussed this briefly at our last meeting. We've got an update from Pointer Sproul. Y'all should have had an opportunity to review that, if you have any questions. This would be the time to ask questions on that. And as of tonight, as you've seen, part of the MOU, working with DEF, and we can't say enough how much we appreciate working with y'all as well, and it shows tonight what you do for our students and staff. I think a lot of us knew it, but hopefully, the community can see it and see the support. So, thank you so much for doing that. And this will be an ongoing yearly update with our MOU. There may be some things in the future that will come back for us to revisit, once the DEF moves forward with their new agreement with Harrow and Associates of managing their property. But that's something that we can certainly address when, if it needs to come up to be. But currently, right now, looking at the MOU between what DEF has reviewed and what we have seen on our table, do I have a motion to accept the MOU between Dare County Schools and the DEF as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the MOU between Dare County Schools and Dare Education Foundation as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Payne. Second by Ms. Lloyd. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Next, we'll go to new business. Evan?
Before you tonight, our additional policies from the Policy Review Committee that are now being presented to the board for the review, there's no action required at this time. If you have any questions, I can attempt to answer. You have Rachel's contact info. I've reviewed these to a certain extent. Most of these are coming from school board's changes and changes in legislation that you guys have been updated on.
And this is just the first reading, so they'll come back to us next month, so.
Yeah, there's actually five policies. And a lot of it's just changing some language to comply with statutory requirements. In fact, three of the policies don't really effectively change at all, it's just we're adding that language. But everyone, if you can take some time to look at it between now and the next meeting, and if you have any questions or concerns, just bring it to the committee and we'll look into that.
I appreciate that. I'm glad to see them coming in advance instead of we getting it in October and the state wants its approval by January.
Yeah.
Which we have done in the past, and it's not very comfortable doing that, but yeah, I'm glad we're getting ahead of it. Mr. Bassnight, I'm going to turn it over to you for the next part.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dare County Schools Policy 8220 sets forth a provision for gifts and McQuees. Through this policy, the Dare Board of Education reserves the right to determine the appropriateness of each gift or contribution for the educational programs of the school system and to accept or reject any proposed gifts. The policy also requires that any gift valued at more than $5,000 receive Board of Education approval before acceptance. Dare County Boat Builders Foundation has offered a donation to go toward the boat-building program at Manio Middle School. The donation is $20,500. The donation is a result of the auction and sale of the skiff that was constructed last year at Manio Middle School and sold last spring. Therefore, it requires board approval. Mr. Chairman and board members, I recommend the board approve this donation in the amount of $20,500 from the Dare County Boat Builders Foundation for the boat-building program at Manio Middle School.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the donation in the amount of $20,500 from the Dare County Boat Builders Foundation for the boat-building program at Manio Middle School as requested.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Bateman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Next item, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Katie Sproul, Assistant Superintendent. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So I am here to share some information about a proposed calendar adjustment for Cape Patteras Elementary School and Cape Patteras Secondary School. So currently, as of today, both schools have utilized all five of their remote days that are allocated to us by NCDPI. So we also have only six instructional days above. The state required 1,025 hours for the remainder of the school year, so we have six bank days for this year left. That is a quite narrow margin. If anybody, we're in the first quarter and we've used five remote days, so that's not outside of the realm of possibility that we could be in a situation where we're having to use those six days pretty quickly. If we were to lose additional instructional time due to the weather or other emergencies, we would quickly reach a point where we would need to make up the hours by using teacher workdays, holidays, or holiday breaks, or extending the length of the school day. So, all of which present significant challenges for students, families, and staff. So, to help us maintain compliance with where we're at with the calendar requirements, we are proposing that this Friday, October 17th, that is currently scheduled as a required workday for staff, be a student day, a regular student day for both Cape Patteras Elementary and Cape Patteras Secondary Schools. This adjustment provides a little bit of a buffer as we move into the winter months and then where weather-related closures are more likely, especially with the road closures and all of that that we've had recently. So my proposal is to make a calendar adjustment for this Friday, October 17th, to be a student day instead of a required teacher day.
Thank you, Ms. Sproul. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept that?
Motion to accept as presented.
Motion by Mr. Payne to a second. Second by Ms. Lloyd. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Next item on the list was the North Carolina School Board Association delegate voting process. Each year during our school board conference, and that's held in November, the North Carolina School Board Association has an opportunity to have four primary voting delegates that serves on that committee. During that delegates process- During that delegates process, they actually work with the future of the School Board Association for their events and their policy and procedures. Tonight, I am recommending to serve on that delegate for this coming school year, the following four would be Mr. Payne, Ms. Lloyd, Ms. Bright, and Mr. Bateman. There are also two alternates if someone could not make it for any reason, and I would respectfully put myself and Mr. Wicker as the alternate. So if that would be, motion on the floor to accept those four to be our delegates for next month?
Make a motion for those delegates as presented.
A motion by Mr. Payne, second. Second by Mr. Bateman. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. So Ms. Georgia, if you would, please send that out to the School Board Association of our delegates because we have to let them be notified by November 1st. Next item on the list is selecting a board member to represent the Dare County Housing Foundation. Mr. Payne gave us a presentation just a few minutes ago. Mr. Farron, thank you so much for being here tonight. On behalf of the Board of Education, we appreciate you and Donna's presentations multiple times to our board. I think it's been very helpful having Mr. Payne on that task force, coming back, giving us information. Y'all present to us many times, so it gives us an opportunity to understand what's going on with the housing task force. And as you said earlier, we have been very fortunate back in the previous years of having that legislation. And that legislation given the opportunity Dare Education Foundation working with us many years ago. So we see it work. It does work in Dare County. And I for one would love to see it grow on Roanoke Island or to Dare Mayland. So we'll have that third part of that housing process for education as well as the other task for, uh, working task force. So if I may, can I have a nominee from the floor of that representative that will represent us on the housing task foundation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ron Payne.
Any other names? So we have a nomination of Mr. Payne to a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lloyd. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Congratulations, Ms. Payne.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This concludes our business meeting for tonight, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bateman if you'd like to start it out for the closure of our meeting.
You wanna start with me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm gonna borrow some of Kenny's minutes since he couldn't be here this evening. Is that all right, Mr. Bassnight?
No.
Clock's running. Clock's running.
Well, let me start by saying it's good to see the Dare Education Foundation Board here. Most of the board members are very able to bake it. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Susan. Great presentation. I was looking at your annual report, very simple, very easy to read. Looking forward to continuing working with you all moving forward. Looking at the individuals in the room, good group so far. Notice one of my friends walked in, Ms. Shannon, how are you? That's okay. That's okay. Glad to have you here with us this evening and everyone else. Let's see, that walk-around we did with Mr. Kidwell a few weeks ago was very good to show him and different things at First Flight High School, Manio High School, over at Early College. He seemed like he was really taking it all in and was really intrigued by a lot of different pieces of that. I was able to go to Pasquattank Elementary School a few weeks ago for lead training. That was very insightful. There's lots of different things that were going on there, lots of great discussion. Met some different board members from around the district. It was, it was a good experience. Another thing I was able to do was go to First Flight Middle School for that voting day with the League of Women Voters. Ms. Lloyd went as well. That was very neat. I loved how they set it all up as far as like they had the voting booths, they had the kids come in, they voted, they dropped their little, their ballot in the box and everything like that and they counted. It was really nice the way it was set up. And of course, I thank Ms. Shannon Brinkley for inviting us to go and be a part of that and check that out. Afterwards though, I went to the, is Ms. Gobin still in here? There she is. I went to the cafeteria and I sat with a couple students and just socialized with them and Mr. Seamus, Mr. Cam, Mr. Finn, and Mr. Jose, I sat with them at lunch and they said something about the maple syrup needs to be replaced in the cafeteria. And I said, well, I'll bring that up at the board meeting. I said, if I see Ms. Gobin, I'll let her know to replace the maple syrup. So there's that.
Get a motion on the floor for that?
We need a motion for that. We'll talk, we'll put that in new business next month.
You would have to amend the agenda.
One thing that was mentioned a little earlier was during the board members' comments over here from the student advisors was the Buddy Class at Manio Elementary School. My son's in that class with Ms. Jordan and that's definitely a cool program that they have. They actually are at, the 5th graders at Manio Elementary School will be going to Pirate's Cove on the 29th of this month to, for a career day of sorts, to kind of look at different things and that's gonna be neat. I was planning on attending that. Couple other things that I wanted to kind of take note of, that I went through the website, MaxPreps. It's all the different teams that are ranked and everything like that and I noticed a couple of things. Manio High School's women's tennis team is second in the state right now for 2A schools. Manio High School's football team is somewhere in the top 10. There's a couple of different sites that said that they were in different spots, but they're in the top 10 in the state for 2A. Hatteras volleyball team is ranked number eight in the state for 1A schools. Manio High School's volleyball team is doing quite well. Four? Is that accurate, four? I got a different number here, but... It's, according to MaxPreps, it's ninth. But regardless, you're still up there. Manio High School's men's soccer team is also ranked second in the state for 2A schools. And that was all information I read this morning. So I thought that needed a little bit of a nod of how hard our athletes are working on a regular basis to achieve greatness, so. And Ms. Marla's on that volleyball team if you didn't notice, so. I'm looking forward to the retention and recruitment group that we are starting to get up off the ground. Looking forward to that. You know, I had somebody say to me the other day, they said, you know, you shout out to Ms. Shannon Brinkley all the time. And I said, well, Ms. Shannon invites us to things. If you're doing cool stuff in your school, let us know. I want to come and see it. I want to come and hang out with you. I don't, that's the only other way I know how to put it. She sends an email to us, hey, would love it if you could come. I'd go if I can. Ms. Lloyd goes if she, we all go if we can. So please, let us know, I would love to come and hang out with y'all.
If you wanna see cool stuff, just pick a school and walk inside. Cause it's happening everywhere.
Done. No problem, I'll start tomorrow. Again, my phone number is 252-256-3252. If you need to call me about anything, wanna talk to me about anything, I can't guarantee you're always gonna like what I'm gonna say, but I welcome the phone calls. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd?
First of all, I want to thank our student advisors, they always do a lovely job. Y'all are really getting the hang of it and doing really well and especially considering the traffic and road closures and all the obstacles. Very good. So congratulations so far, girls. Thank you for the people who had public comment. I know it takes a lot of effort and energy to put that together and come out and be articulate with what you said and it was very impressive and very interesting. I'm not a wrestling person or a jujitsu person, but I didn't even know that was down here, so thank you for sharing. I may stop by and see your facility, that's very interesting. I want to thank the teachers and the leadership. I look out while we're sitting here and I see a lot of faces of people who have been at work all day long, either teaching or working at central office or going all over the county doing different things and making sure everything is taken care of to make our schools great. So I know that takes a lot of effort and to stay awake through all this is extremely impressive too, because I know it's hard. So thank you, cause I see a lot of y'all sitting along the back wall there and, you know, all the people that come in early to help us set up the cameras and set up the computers, I appreciate you.
You just woke up Oliver.
He's on his fifth cup of coffee by here.
So thank you for all that you do to make things great and to show up tonight as well. That means a lot to everyone here. And to Mrs. Kifner, I just got to meet her. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago in the library with Ms. Kifner and Ms. Brinkley about something else that I hope to tell about in the near future, once I've got that all together. But they have been a delight to work with and congratulations to her for being an outstanding middle school science teacher. I can't imagine. So that's impressive. I'm impressed with any middle school teacher. So, you know, my daughter's a middle school teacher and high school, so I think that's an awesome job to be in. It takes a special person. And to Mr. Metzinger for his Coach of the Year Award, congratulations again. That takes a lot of time and energy away from your family too, so that's awesome. Having been to the Holocaust Museum that was helped to be funded by the Dare Education Foundation, that was amazing. Absolutely. First of all, the work that they put into it and it wasn't just Ms. Brinkley, it was a lot of people that went into that. And then I read the book because she gave me a copy and I couldn't put it down. It was very, very good. And so I encourage everyone to go back, if you haven't read that story, to go and read that and to put yourself in that lady's position as she wrote that and witnessed that as a child and then to go back and tell her story as an adult is amazing. So, and then all the teachers, especially the teacher who's a mom who got emotional. I appreciate that because as a mom, those things that you're doing mean a lot to the parents, not just the teachers, not just the schools, but to the parents as well. So that's huge. I don't think people always factor in that parents are in, you're affecting parents as well in our community, so thank you for all that you do. And then to the election that we went to at First Flight Middle, that was a lot of fun. The League of Women Voters set up the little voting booths, they had the little ballots and Mr. Gimel, I want to give him a shout out as well because he had the kids put together little election videos and tell about themselves and promote their platform. Very impressive to have our students part of that process and to understand so that maybe by the time they hit 18 years old and can really vote in an election that is gonna affect them, you know, in the United States, they will know what they're doing. They'll go in there and they'll have had this education behind them. So all the hard work that takes, I appreciate it. We all do, actually. So thank you again to all of our teachers, all of our support staff, and everyone that makes Dare County Schools amazing.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brower?
Yeah, I don't really have a whole lot, but touching on cool things going on in schools, heading down to First Flight High School immediately after this for a Powder Puff Football game. So Justin, you hop on in if you wanna come with. Other than that, I got nothing else.
Thank you. Ms. Gaskell?
I want to thank the board again for the opportunity to be here. I really appreciate it. Also, congratulations for your Silver Bell Award. Quite the honor. Also, I want to thank the Dare Education Foundation for the continued support of the students in our schools and the staff we love so much. I've seen the impact you've had on many of my friends who've received scholarship and help from you guys and I know they wouldn't be maybe in college without it, so thank
I would also like to highlight the Dare Education Foundation. I had always heard of it, but I never knew like what it actually like did for our community. But the story from the mom really, I would like to give like my point of view as a, like my parents have four kids, as a sibling of four kids, I know the immense like pressure and like how it can be financially with having kids be in college at the same time. I know like that that mom really appreciated it and I know the student like went back to her, went to the mom and was like, I really hope that like this can help and was like a weight lifted off of their shoulders. So I really appreciated the presentation. Like Mr. Bateman said, it was very easy to read and it was nice to see, so thank you. Also, last Friday, I attended probably my last ever High Five Friday at the elementary school. High Five Friday is where all of the athletic sports teams from like season, like the season it's fall, go to Manio Elementary School and basically greet all of the elementary school kids with high fives in the morning. And High Five Friday has always been one of my favorite things. When I was in elementary school, my older brothers, they did it to me. So it's like total full circle moment that I get to do it to the kids nowadays and now they see me as like a big kid, but I was the kid in there being like, I can't wait to be in high school. So it's very bittersweet knowing that was probably my last one, but I love it so much and I love that that's a community thing that we do here. So, yeah.
Thank you. How about our team from Hatters? Are you there?
I'm here. All right. I'd like to begin again by congratulating the school board members on receiving the Silver Bell Award. Over 700 hours of training is no small accomplishment, so thank you for your continued commitment to serving our schools and students. And then I also wanted to thank the Dare Education Foundation and our quote really stayed with me, which was, "The future of our communities will be written in the investments we make in our children today." And it was inspiring to hear from teachers across our schools and see how the Dare Education Foundation's support invests not only in educators but also in students.
Mr. Bassnight?
Mr. Finn?
Mr. Bassnight?
You sure?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I want to go back and I'm gonna reiterate something that Chairman said at the beginning of the meeting. October is a big month in education. It's National Principals Month, but it's also National Custodian and Maintenance Day, it's World Teachers Day, it's National Coaches Day, it's National Instructional Coaches Day. We just heard a while ago, it's Walk the Road to School Day. This week is National School Lunch Week. Chubby? Go get lunch. And October 20th, 24th is National School Bus Safety Week, so October is big. Mentioning school lunch, Mr. Wicker had asked about some, how we were doing on our school lunches and I've got some, we didn't start the program last year of providing lunches for all students until October, November. So what I've got right now is September numbers to compare September of last year. But our elementary numbers are up almost 8%. Our middle school, this is breakfast, numbers are up 82%. Our high school breakfast is up 55%. And then for lunches, elementary 14, middle 14, and high 11 over last year's numbers. So our numbers are continuing to go up and those numbers went up last year as well, so we're getting a lot more kids lunch. Dare County Schools Teacher of the Year, we mentioned Mr. Gimel just a few minutes ago. Mr. Gimel has moved on to the next round in the selection process as Teacher of the Year in the region and we're looking forward to how far he goes and ends up being the State Teacher of the Year, hopefully. And the last thing I'll say is this. We talked about the calendar revisions and Cape Hatteras Elementary Secondary, the early college students and staff, and the Cape Hatteras schools as well as the ones that work at the early college. Man, this year has been tough on them. They have had challenges, they've had power outages when, didn't know why the power went out. They had fiber cut multiple times. They've had weather after weather after weather after storm. I want to take a minute just to say to them how much we deeply appreciate your perseverance, your teamwork, your willingness to come together over and over and over again. Your commitment to your school and to education and to each other. And I just want to highlight that, you know... And, and I just want to highlight that, you know, living on the edge of the world is beautiful, but sometimes it has some real challenging moments. And this first nine weeks with, with Hatters has been extremely challenging. But, you know, we've been through challenges before, and, and I know that you coming together and all of us working together is what makes us who we all are. And I just wanted to acknowledge that sometimes it's not easy, but I believe it's absolutely worth it. So we're here, we're going to support all of our people to the highest degree possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bassnight, you stole all my good stuff. I just want to say about Hatters and everything, but hats off to your staff also because I know y'all put some hours in. So I just want to ditto what you just said to everybody down at Hatters. Susan Rowe, thank you for your leadership with DEF and everybody else on the board. Thank you for being here tonight. You mentioned in your presentation 24,000 per year for a four-year college. I thought it was higher. But as I've always said, if you go to COA your first two years, you can save some money because you get to go for free. Not only for college, but for your CTE certifications as well. And I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve on the Dare Housing Foundation. And once again, Mr. Farron, looking forward to working more with you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to just thank our student advisors. What amazing job tonight. If there was a, a day that could go wrong for y'all was today. Traffic has been crazy through Manial, as we all know. And as Mr. Bassnight said earlier, and Mr. Payne commented about Hatters, you know, the situation that they've been going through for many, many weeks. And y'all young ladies have done phenomenal stepping up to the plate at the last minute, helping one another to present the school's recognitions and accomplishments. So I just want to say thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to thank the board for their willingness to involve more students in the Student Advisory Corps, because that's what's allowed these kids to jump in and help each other out, work together in order to be here for the board tonight. So thank you, board members, as well.
Glad to. Glad to. As Mr. Bassnight said earlier, we are so grateful for our wonderful staff. They do so much behind the scenes for us, and to be ready for the next day for our children to get in that classroom. I guess it was Tuesday night, if not Wednesday night, Mr. Bassnight sent an email out to the board to let us know that we had a major situation going down with the IT. I'm for knowing that the technology people had this issue. The email was sent out and he let us know that Ms. King and her staff worked throughout the night and the next morning to do everything possible for our staff and students to get in that building the next day so they can have their internet up and running. Was it running 100%? No, but it was able to get us through the morning. And by that afternoon, our technology department done their job and made it really, really hard to make it where the kids were going through and doing what's got to be done. So like I said, I know we've got a wonderful team, but when something like that, I just want to give that team a recognition of their dedication and work behind the scenes. So thank you, Holly, and, and your team. I done something last Monday that I haven't done since 2016, and prior to that, I didn't do until 1988, and that was drive the school bus to Eastlake. And I can tell you, from last Monday to 1988 was totally different, and it was a little different than 2016. And I say that to not take a recognition, but is to let you know that Dare County Schools is really looking forward to some bus drivers. We have an out, I mean, outstanding transportation department. Mr. Chandler and his team is recognized many times through the state level. And we all get emails, we see that we have some transportation's delay, and it's not because of our department, it's just that we do not have enough people to fill their shoes. When we have a driver that is sick, like we all get, there's some times that the transportation department has no one to fill their shoes. And when some of us would like to have extra bus stops throughout the district, sometimes we're not able to do that because we have enough, we don't have enough drivers to fulfill those duties. And I think overall, through our departments, we're pretty much status quo except for our transportation department. It is a tough job, but last Monday, getting, I mean, I was in Eastlake at 6:15. I mean, it was dark. I mean, dark, dark. And those kids got on the bus at 6:15, and first thing, those three kids went, went to the very back seat and fell asleep. So I didn't really get any opportunity to talk with anyone till I got to Mans Harbor. And this little young man, he didn't stop. He let me know everything from the White Store until we got to Manial Elementary School about his mama, his bus stop, and what he had for breakfast. But it's really, it's a great job. I mean, my heart's in transportation, as y'all all know, but I had no problem doing that. But, you know, I've just encouraged that if you have an opportunity, you have some free time, please reach out to the transportation department, see if it's something y'all like, the community would like to be interested in, and stepping up, not only driving the school bus, but also our activity routes. You know, it's a lot of opportunities there as well. So I cannot say enough about Dare County Schools. They're a great team, and I just appreciate everything y'all do for us.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to go back and just highlight what you were talking about, our, our technology department.
Sure.
We had a switch go down in one of our systems, and we thought it had gone bad. That was about 3:30 in the afternoon. The guys jumped in right then. We began to get updates about 5, about where they were and, and the challenges that they were finding. I think Holly took them dinner or breakfast one. Breakfast, okay. They worked straight through on the phone with MCNC in Raleigh, who put somebody in a car to start them down here to be here the next morning. They worked till midnight, went home for a few hours, and were back there at 5 o'clock in the morning, and Holly brought them breakfast in that morning. They had put together, by being on the phone with MCNC, pretty much everything we needed to know, and come to find out the switch hadn't gone bad. We thought it was defective. It hadn't. It had just lost everything in our system, on our phones, on our internet, all our connectivity. And, and Holly told me something, and that's what I want to share with you. Holly told me something the other day when she went in and thanked the guys for being in there late that night. And I don't remember which one that turned around and said to you, but the reply to her thank you was, "It's our job. This is what we do." And that, just the thought that they were going to stay there, and I think they had to make them go home, that they were going to stay there until they had it fixed because that's what they needed to do, that, that's, that says a lot for our people and, and for those people that were willing to do that. So I appreciate you greatly bringing that up. Thank you.
Mr. Evans, thank you for coming to Dare County tonight and fill Rachel's shoes. We appreciate everything Pointer Sproul does for our board.
Thank you for having me, and shout out to Ms. King. She was my middle school science teacher, so to bring it full circle. You never know, your student might end up being the board attorney one day.
That is true. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion by Mr. Payne? Second by Mr. Bateman? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Any nays? Aye? Have a good night.